Six o'clock, so let's get on with the show. I'll call the July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty Board of Trustees Special Meeting to Order. Could we have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Angelo?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Browning?
Present.
Trustee Caraviss?
Present.
Trustee Lowell?
Present.
Trustee Miller?
Present.
Trustee Wa. And Trustee Rogan?
Present.
Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time that we all take a reflective moment of silence. Thank you. That normally is a very emotional time for me because I normally mention how many people we've lost to COVID. And I was thinking today that if we were in a hot war and we lost one hundred and forty-five thousand Americans in six months, what all of us would be thinking? I just hope that everybody is really, really careful in the future. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda or amend the agenda?
I have an amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Trustee Caraviss.
I'd like to amend. Adjust room four-four to the audience business. As indicated, our meeting indicated we would have audience business as a regular meeting and it's just a small typo, so. An altercation that yes, there is audience business.
Do we have a second?
Ma'am, sir, I could not hear Trustee Caraviss.
He proposed to amend the agenda to include audience business as it was left off the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda as stated. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Angelo?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Browning?
Aye.
Trustee Caraviss?
Aye.
Trustee Lowell?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Yay.
Trustee Wa?
Aye.
And Trustee Rogan?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously and the agenda is amended. And so we will, at this time, have anybody who wishes to address the Board of Trustees, please indicate that and we will call on you.
Mayor Angelo, just really quickly.
Yes.
I think the clerk needs to put into the record that Trustee Wa has joined the meeting at this point.
Okay.
Sorry, I put it in my minutes that he joined after roll call.
Okay, we may proceed. Thank you.
Thomas Maggio wants to speak tonight, if that's possible.
Yes, you are recognized, Thomas.
Kim Lear would like to speak tonight as well.
That's fine.
Herman Zuckerman would like to speak.
We'll speak and be recognized one at a time. I'll continue.
Herman Zuckerman would like to be recognized and speak as well.
Okay, Thomas, you have the floor, sir.
I'm here tonight. It's a good friend of mine, Randall, owns now the Lion's Den.
Thomas, I'm sorry. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Four-twenty-seven Park Street.
Thank you.
Thomas Maggio, yep.
Thank you.
I'm a firefighter in the Big Alk Meadows Volunteer Fire Force, too.
Okay.
For a few years, too. My good friend here, Randall, owns the Lion's Den. And I understand that he's run into an issues with a local resident. All I wanted to say for consideration for you folks is when you purchase a property, it's up to you to do your due diligence to see what it's surrounded by. For example, if it's next to train tracks, it's wise to assume that a train will go by at some point, even though it might not be going by when you purchase the property. I don't see why any business, whether it be a train station or a bar, be punished for one resident who should have realized that the business was there when they purchased their property. And so I'm here just to speak and support Randall and hope that the greater good wins out over one individual. So thanks, guys, for hearing me.
Thank you.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Thomas. Harmon Zuckerman, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm an attorney and my name is Harmon Zuckerman. I work at Prescott and Joyner Goodman Greenstein in Boulder, Colorado, at forty-seven fifty Table Mesa Drive. And I am here to speak on behalf of my client, David Wickham, who's the owner of Eight Twelve Mountain View. And there's a matter on the agenda tonight regarding potentially holding a hearing to revoke his building permit. So I just have a few comments about that that I'd like to make. I've reviewed your packet, spoken to your town attorney, Brandon Ditman, and I think it's useful to look back into some of the past record. If you look at the Board of Trustees minutes from twelve twenty ninety-three, the developer agreed to a notion of adding language in the plat notes to inform potential buyers that the installation of lift stations on lots one to fourth needed would be the responsibility of the individual lot owners. You know, in this case, in the Mountain View subdivision, there were no plat notes added that would say that lot owners in the future would have to dedicate water rights in order to develop. There was discussion in the planning commission minutes from September of ninety-three about the Mountain View subdivision having steep slopes. And the municipal code in effect at the time provided for an exclusion from the water right dedication requirement areas with steep slopes. Steep was defined as greater than twenty-five percent, which is probably much steeper than my client's lot. But it's worth noting that the exclusion provision required that any parcel excluded from the requirement to dedicate water rights would be identified on the plat as not being entitled to develop until water for it was dedicated. However, the lot owned by my client, the lot in question, was not shown on the plat as requiring water right dedications for development. The town had a requirement that new plated lots must address water in one of the following ways: either have water dedicated to support their development, pay cash and lieu, be excluded from the requirement due to steep slopes, or have the dedication requirement waived by the board. In this case, the fact that multiple lots in the Mountain View subdivision were developed without having to dedicate additional water is a good indication that the plat was approved based on the occurrence of one of those exclusions above, and no further water right dedication should be required. Just have a couple more points to make. One is just that the applicant, in this case, applied for a building permit in March, went through a significant amount of work with town staff, and got the building permit approved in May. Colorado law provides that vested rights accrue to a developer where the developers expended significant monies and effort in developing an approved project. In this case, Mr. Wickham has spent twenty thousand dollars on blasting and twenty-five thousand dollars more on foundation prep and foundation work, five thousand dollars more on surveying to make sure that his foundation would be placed in exactly the right location. And therefore, his development rights already vested. So even if there was a reason to require him to dedicate a water right, which I don't believe that there is based on the evidence, the town still would lack authority to revoke his building permit or to issue a stop work order based on the grounds asserted. So, you know, I would just ask that, you know, the town look kindly on Mr. Wickham. He's been living in the community for twenty-two years and has been his own this lot since two thousand and three. And he really wants to build his dream home for himself and his wife Kathy on this lot. He's already started working on it and has been forced to stop work at great expense because he probably has lost his contractor at this point for at least three more weeks at minimum for the finishing of the construction of the foundation. And that's about it. But thank you for your consideration. I hope you will not vote to revoke his permit and you will vote not to hold a hearing to revoke his permit. And I believe that David was supposed to be on this call to make a public comment as well. So if David's there, I hope he does speak up for himself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kim Lear, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. My name is Kim Lear. I own a home at nineteen sixty Collard Lane in Spring Gulch, and I run a business in town. I have three office suites on the second floor of Biz Barn Suites on High Street. Like Thomas Maggio, I am here to speak up in support of Randall and Denise Yarborough, the owners of the Lion's Den. I completely agree with the point that Mr. Maggio made, and I would like to speak directly about the noise ordinance itself. I feel that I would really like to strongly encourage the town alliance to take a very close look, revisit that ordinance, and look at rewriting it. It seems vague in my mind, insufficient in specific details that would allow it to really guide business owners or others who want to play music or have other sound to know how loud is too loud, as well as giving those who are required to enforce the code the information they need to know when a violation is warranted. I think that specifically saying electrically amplified sound that is audible at twenty-five feet can be deemed unreasonable seems completely unreasonable in and of itself. Most amplified music that I've heard is twenty, you know, when you're standing twenty-five feet from amplified music, it is going to be audible. I don't think the issue is whether it's audible at that distance or any other distance that's decided, but that there need to be specific decibel, either acceptable levels or unacceptable threshold set so that people understand what is too loud. So I would really ask that you look not just at the feet requirement, but that you set some decibel levels. There are other noise ordinances in other towns. Netherlands, as an example, there's plenty of others that do include that specific information. And I think it provides what people need to be able to try and be in compliance as well as to enforce. I feel like Denise and Randall have made a very good faith effort to try and keep the noise on that patio to an acceptable level. They have spent time and money rebuilding their stage and insulating it. They have turned down the volume. They've done lots. And so I'd like to see the town, as well as the complainant, you know, come to the table and try to figure out reasonable solutions. I have only been in Lions for seven years, and I can tell you that I love, absolutely love, living and working in this town. And part of the reason is the kind of rich history of art and music in the town. And COVID's hit us all hard, you know, from a business perspective, but also all of our music is on hold. And I think Denise and Randall are in a unique opportunity at this time to be able to continue providing both to locals and people from afar a chance to see live music on their patio. It's a delightful place to spend time, and I think that they should be treated fairly. I think the board should look at what to do in the interim, you know, between the time that an ordinance can be looked at and reviewed to make sure that they're given a fair shot at being able to run their business and not have to shut down. We're losing great businesses, and it's sad to see. This is not just about them. It's about the vibrance and vitality of Lions. And so thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anybody else wish to address the Board of Trustees at this time?
I would. Fareed Abraham.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Hi, my name's Fareed Abraham, one forty-two Kelling Drive. We've been in Lions since two thousand and seven. I'm here to clear up some of the confusion going on with the sound and what's happening up on Kelling Drive in regards to Lions Den because most of it's been very one-sided, put over social media versus, you know, what's actually happening. I'm being made out as bad day, which is fine because I've taken on the responsibility for our street to be the spokesperson for our house because most people do not want to be singled out and ostracized for going against anything in town. That includes my name being printed and our house location being printed on social media by Mr. Randall Yarborough himself. But let's be more clear about this. This started last year with a BOT. I did propose a sound, a change for our sound ordinance. And I emailed it to all the BOT today. It's the same one as last year when we had our arbitration. It was also one that I recommended. It's the one that's being used most on the front range because, as you know, the front range has grown tremendously in the past ten years. There's a lot more noise. In Lions, not only are the parks full and the river is full and we've got all the traffic, we have the Lion's Den. I have taken decibel readings from a calibrated decibel meter at fifty yards, which is one hundred and fifty feet, and also fifty feet higher. I've given those readings to the BOT consistently last year, also videos of how loud it is. Part of what's going on also is people think, I'm writing the tickets. I'm not. What is happening, and this was decided by the BOT, is that we, our only recourse was to contact the sheriff and let the sheriff make the decision. And you call the sheriff. The sheriff goes to three separate locations. He deems whether the music is too loud. He even goes across the highway to see if he can hear the music and the two other locations, one location being the person's house. He then decides whether, yes, it's too loud. I've recorded as loud as ninety-three decibels on my deck, which is equivalent to me about screaming in your face. But if I quit, why am I being interrupted? I'm sorry.
No, it's, somebody did that inadvertently, I'm sure.
Okay. It would be equivalent to me screaming in your face as loud as I could at six inches, but it goes on for hours. Nevertheless, he says we're singling them out. If there was ten businesses down there playing loud music outside and we kept on calling on the Lion's Den, that would be singling out. But since they're the only entity down there, they are the problem, not the one that's being singled out. We want him to have a successful business, just like we want to have a peaceful household. We have gotten support and letters from twelve people on Kelling Drive and fourteen individuals, because a couple of them were couples, complaining about the noise. And so all this has been recorded. It has been given to the previous BOT. It's been given to Sergeant Chris. It's, you know, it's been well documented. From Monday night, Mr. England's letter that was wrote, he told us not to cut down the brush because, you know, of noise. Well, the brush was all the way up to the house. We did it for landscaping, yes, but we also did it for fire mitigation as we are in a high fire zone. So, and it really didn't make a difference in the sound from the highway. And that was a year before the Lion's Den even existed. Again, this is not a personal belief. This is about a quality of life issue for us on Kelling Drive. You know, there was no loud band or outside music played there for the six years previous to that. So that in itself, you know, shows that there is a precedent there. That I talked to the previous owners in two thousand and thirteen, which was, geez, I just forgot the name. Huh?
The Outlaw?
No. Oh, The Outlaw. And he said the major problem there was not loud music. It was the motorcycles. Our house is quiet enough that you barely even hear the motorcycles go by on the highway. But in our house, we can be, we've experimented on what the quietest place in our house is. And we went to our upstairs closet and sat between clothing, and we were still able to hear the music. So I believe if you entertain your customers, that's great. But if you lease an area of this big, it should be music within the area of this big. Outside of that area, it becomes noise pollution. But if you're fifty yards away, as far away as we are, and we're in, you know, our basement or wherever in our house and we can still hear, it becomes an aural assault. And that's what our problem is, is that we're uncomfortable. It's not like a little twinkle in the air. We're uncomfortable. It's caused anxiety amongst people on our street, them to take sleeping pills in order for them to calm down, things like that. So it's not just a gentle playing of music. Yes, it's important that our businesses survive in Lions. Yes, COVID is going to cause a lot of problems. But, oh, you know, I want to give credit to Randall because two weeks ago, he did play amplified music inside his building because he does have a stage inside also. And it was fine until someone opened the side door and it came out like a boom. If that door stays closed, it's fine. It's totally fine. And that's one of the things we recommended during arbitration last year. For the patio, if it is acoustic without being assisted by a PA system, which is happening now, then if it's just purely acoustic, it wouldn't be loud enough for us to hear it. But it is assisted by an electronic PA system, so the sound carries. You know, we're not anti-music. We love music, but we want quality of life.
Thank you, Fareed. We do have to move on, and we've allotted you additional time. So I would like to ask anybody else at this time if they would wish to address the board.
Yes, I would.
One second.
I would.
Dave's iPad, who has had his hand up, and Erin with the chamber has had her hand up. I'm not sure.
Okay. What is Denise's last name?
Dave's iPad.
Oh, Dave's iPad. Dave's iPad? You are recognized.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, could we please have your name and address for the record?
This is Dave and Kathy Wickham. We're at one forty-three Kelling Drive. So we are the owners of a lot at Eight Twelve Mountain View. We are longtime Lions residents. We moved to town twenty-two years ago. So when this lot became available seventeen years ago, we looked into purchasing this lot. I have been a real estate developer for almost thirty years. I'm also a licensed general contractor and licensed real estate broker. I have developed and entitled many real estate developments all around Lions. Unfortunately, nothing in Lions, but just finished something in Boulder. I've done over two hundred lots in Longmont. I'm in the middle of a hundred and twenty-three lot subdivision in Earthit. And these were all ground up, fully entitled projects that had raw water dedication components to them. So I feel like I do understand real estate development and raw water dedication. So before we closed on this lot, I went ahead and did my due diligence. I made the rounds. I started with the land developer, who was George Chandler, and was going to be my future neighbor. So I visited with George, asked him about the development. We talked development. I asked him about the raw water. He said, yes, it's been satisfied. All you need to do was pay your water and sewer tap. I said, great. Made sense to me. There's only two lots left that hadn't been built on in that subdivision. I also read the subdivision improvement agreement, which didn't make any reference to raw water, just talked about having to pay the water and sewer tap. That all made sense. I read your land use agreement. It clearly said that the raw water is the obligation of the developer, which I'm very used to, and that they would not issue any permits until the raw water dedication was satisfied. Then I went down and visited with the building department. It was Jacqueline back then. I chatted with her. I forget who was in the planning department, asked the same questions about raw water, about building fees, tap fees. She said that raw water had been satisfied. She gave me a building permit application, which I still have in my file, by the way. And so based on that information, we went ahead and closed on the lot. So now, seventeen years later, we finally get to an opportunity where we can, you know, build our house. And I go down in the beginning of March, apply for a building permit. Almost two months later, I'm issued a building permit. During that two months, I heard from almost everybody in, as part of that process, your billing department called me numerous times. I talked to the fire department, the planning department, your town clerk. All had questions. They were all answered, and the permit was issued at a cost of just under fifty-four thousand dollars. So away we go. We start, we start construction. I'm into construction. We're two months into it. During that time, I also asked and was given two blasting permits to blast my foundation. They were granted. And then, so two months later, I'm issued a stop work order and told that there's an issue with raw water. So, yeah, I understand that the town has some issues with some of its older record keeping. You know, that's not uncommon for a lot of small towns, and you're not alone there. I've run across it before. And I also understand that the town passed a raw water ordinance. I get that. They're trying to fix that problem or fill in that gap or hole. I get that. But I don't believe the intent of the ordinance or the spirit of the town is to not honor the representations it made and the agreements it made to me in the past. So we've already paid for the raw water. A developer includes that when he sells you the lot. It's been paid and it's vested. That's a vested entitlement. Now, we're spending money every day by not being able to build. I've had a higher legal representation, which, you know, is very costly. And I went through all this knowing, being in that business seventeen years ago. And so Kathy and I respectfully asked that you resolve this issue tonight so we can continue on and build our home and be part of this community for another twenty-two years or longer.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Erin Fowdy, would you wish to address the Board of Trustees at this time?
I would, thank you.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Erin Fowdy at three-two-seven Cherokee Road. I want to echo what others tonight have said in support of the Lion's Den on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. There has been a long history of music at this location. One of the previous speakers mentioned previous owners such as The Outlaw. However, there was also quite a bit of music played outside when it was the Axonore a few years ago. So this is not new. This is something that's been going on for a while. And it's a concern for all of our local And it's a concern for all of our local businesses who rely on music to bring customers in. Uh, that being said, that's not my main reason for speaking tonight. During the last BOT meeting on Monday uh of this week, Trustee Caraviss asked, what do the businesses need? From what I'm hearing and from what I've, I've heard since the very beginning of this pandemic is that our businesses need grant money, not more loans, but grants. While it has definitely been helpful to have the option of the revolving loan fund, especially with it now being zero percent interest with deferred payments, it's still a loan that has to be paid back. The PPP is complicated and the process for forgiveness um is so complex that I've heard of a few businesses who were hesitant to even use the money and intended to return it rather than risk having to pay it back. Um, keep in mind, several of our businesses are still paying off loans from the flood. So taking on more debt just really isn't an option for them. Uh, there was a wonderful grant through the LCF, Lions Community Foundation, that gave forty-two thousand dollars to forty-two local businesses. However, that was only a grant of a thousand dollar per business. Definitely helpful, but just really not enough to make an impact. Um, currently, our businesses are experiencing a reduction in hours and sales or are completely closed, yet they are still responsible for rent, utilities, and if they are still open um and can afford them their employees' wages. So even in normal times, our businesses need every bit of the business they receive during the summer to get them through the winter. So with no festivals, weddings, tourism, or regular hours or capacity, um, our businesses are in a very precarious place. The town recently received ninety-two thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars as part of the CARES Act to be used for COVID-related expenses. And it's my understanding that this money can also be used for business grants. So far, the town has used five thousand of that, um, those monies to purchase PPE for Alliance businesses, which is awesome. It's fantastic. And about ten thousand for past expenses, um, as the money was received more recently and can still be used for COVID expenses as far back as March. Um, so money has been used for that and then also for our parks. Um, I haven't been able to get um an idea um in my emails as, as to how much has actually been used for the parks. However, considering that the parks are now closed and that locals were not even able to use the parks due to how overrun they became, in addition to the fact that from what we have seen, visitation to our, our um, our parks does not necessarily cross over to meaningful patronage to our businesses. Even when encouraged with vouchers, um, people still aren't really coming into our businesses from the parks. Um, so there's no point in maintaining our parks if we lose the sales tax brought in by our businesses. It just seems this money could be used better. The Lions Area Chamber of Comma Commerce strongly advocates for using the majority of the remaining money the town received from the CARES Act to support our local businesses in the form of grants. Now more than ever, our businesses need financial support. We have already had three important businesses in our community closed permanently. We have to do everything we can to prevent any more Alliance businesses from closing their doors. And if town is able to, to help with that, then, then they must. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, Madam Administrator, would you uh communicate with uh, uh, Erin uh in regard to a discussion that we've had? Once we figure out how much of the CARE Act uh money uh is remaining, please let her know uh that, that we have uh thought about this issue. Thank you. Would anybody else uh wish to address the board of trustees at this time?
Yes, I would. Jackie Brennan.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jackie Brennan. I live at two nineteen Evans Street. Um, I'm a resident here of more than thirty years. I'm speaking in again in support of the Lions Den. I was at your meeting, the board meeting on Monday night, which I have to just thank you all, it was very informative. Um, I enjoyed the meeting very much and wanted to attend again tonight to say that I would like to be involved in whatever ordinance changes need to be made. I sent letters to the BOT. I also sent letters in support of uh the Lions Den. We've had a lot of music, as Erin stated, we've had a lot of music over the years. And the Axonore, I remember there used to be a group of us called the Saturday Afternoon Club that used to go over there and sit and listen to the music. And we would have just a wonderful time and, and always eat a big meal and listen to the music and nobody ever complained. This was very new to me uh hearing about complaints, um, because I think that the music, I live across the street. I remember the days of the Outlaw Saloon or the Red Hill Salon, whatever, when the motorcycles came in and the music was blasting. And still even then, it would go to eleven o'clock, sometimes midnight. I didn't complain. I figured, well, you know, it's not going to be forever and it's Saturday night, people are having a good time. Um, it'll be over soon and, and got through it. The music that we're hearing at the Lions Den is from six to nine. It's early. They've had it in the afternoon. It is not unreasonable. And I guess I just want to say that this is an important business for us to support. I've been, I'm active in it. I know we've got some funds going. I want to see it go and I do very much want to support music in the summer and hopefully work out a nice mediation with the complainants that, that they can accept this, that Lions needs this music venue. We need the Lions Den. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else wish to address the board of trustees at this time?
Um, it looks like Thomas Maggio has his hand again and then Dave's iPad as well.
I'll recognize Dave. Uh, um, it's a policy of the Board of Trustees uh not to accept uh two uh comments uh from one individual and uh, and uh, we're running over on uh audience business, but it's my nature to let everybody be able to address uh their governing bodies. So uh, please uh, uh, continue, sir. Would you name an address for the record? The name of the person, uh, Madam Clerk?
Um, it was Dave's iPad and I don't know if he can unmute himself.
Oh, no, Dave, yeah, no, he uh, he already addressed the board of trustees.
Oh, he just didn't lower his hand? Okay.
Okay.
That's all I'm seeing then.
Okay.
I don't see anybody.
I'm not able to raise my hand. I'm not sure what's going on. My name is Drew Leno.
Okay, uh, Drew, uh, would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Drew Leno. I live at one twenty-five Pyright Way. And I am here related to the Lions Den in support of them. I have been there on a regular basis along with many other locations in town. And on two occasions when there were complaints about the noise levels, I will say that I was actually there in this table in front of the stage. Yes, it does have an amplifier with acoustic guitar, one person, maybe two people playing, but we were able to have a conversation in a normal voice, no yelling, no shouting, without any issues related to the music being too loud. The only times that we would ever have a problem with the noise was would be when loud trucks or motorcycles would go by. To say that the level was unreasonable at the Lions Den on those two occasions is, in my particular opinion, not correct. The one situation I did observe, there was a law officer there who was standing on the patio, talking to Randall, the owner. And they're having a conversation and you could see they're having a conversation. They're not needing to yell. The sound was not loud in any way, shape or form. Uh, for Lions to have an ordinance that says if you can hear amplified music from over twenty or at twenty-five feet, it needs to consider what is going to happen with the past and hopefully in the future for music in the park. Also for the Planet Bluegrass establishment, those are much louder than the Lions Den has been. And yet I do not believe there are complaints against those venues. So to have a situation where individuals are complaining about how loud the music is and how disruptive it is and that it can be heard in the house, I will say in the two occasions I was there, that's impossible to have happened because, like I said, I was in front of the stage and was able to have a conversation without yelling. In addition, the town does have its rich history of music and to have this happen on a regular basis does seem like someone is having an issue related to how they are being perceived. And I just want to state that, you know, I will, I do not see the issue related to Lions Den being overly obnoxious and loud. They are being well within their range of trying to accommodate the sound. They understand that people might not want to hear it at all points, yet they are with, well within the range of timeframes that are acceptable for sound during the weekends. If there is an ordinance, it needs to have a very specific, specific quantifiable measurement at what level, at what distance, and ensure that that level is associated to the problem and not something else that might be happening in relation to it also. So vehicles going by, motorcycles going by, if those are the issue with the sound and they're relating it on something else, that is not acceptable either. There needs to be very specific timeframes are set, as I said, and levels. And I think Lions Den has gone above and beyond by going through and actually enclosing their stage and putting soundproofing in to ensure that the sound is going the direction it is intended to go and is not causing issues at surrounding locations. Yes, you will be able to hear music that's amplified. Um, I actually lived in the condos right next to Laverne Johnson Park. And during the summer, I could open my bedroom windows and I'm well away from Planet Bluegrass, yet I had a concert in my bedroom. Yet it is something acceptable and understood that they're going to stop at a certain point of time at night and that after that point, if there's a problem with the music, then it's a problem, yet not before that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, we have uh an agenda. We have a trustee who's on uh Eastern Standard Time. I would like to uh, uh, request of the Board of Trustees and the Administrator that we put this uh issue for discussion uh on the next uh regular board meeting. I think, I think that this issue needs to be discussed further. So I, I'll just request that uh, that it be placed on the next agenda and uh, uh, move on for, for tonight. And I hope uh, uh, nobody's offended by not being able to address the Board of Trustees at this time. But if we have it on our next agenda, if you didn't get to speak uh at this meeting, you will get to speak at the next one. I promise you. Um, moving on to general business, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please uh read Resolution twenty twenty dash one twenty into the record?
Yes, Resolution twenty twenty dash one twenty, a resolution of the Town of Lions, Colorado, declaring a state of local disaster emergency due to the public health emergency created by coronavirus disease two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, staff. Back, Lynn?
Thank you. Um, as the board knows, uh, we declared a local state of emergency back in March um due to the COVID pandemic. And since that time, we have adjusted that declaration several times. Um, at our last regular meeting, the Board of Trustees indicated that they wanted to make some amendments. Well, our, our last ordinance expired, our last resolution expired on June fifteenth. And we uh resorted back to the county and state regulations. Uh, since that time, the board talked and they wanted to um reinstitute a local emergency and add language that authorized the town administrator authority to temper, temporarily suspend enforcement of certain regulations that could encourage business activities in our community as well as being, having the flexibility to adjust um the rules in the parks during this time. So uh, you've been presented with a new uh declaration of a local disaster emergency uh and public health emergency created by coronavirus disease on twenty nineteen.
Any questions uh from the board? Seeing none, uh, I'll call for a motion to approve our Resolution twenty twenty dash one twenty.
Still moved.
Still moved. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second uh for approval of a twenty twenty dash uh one twenty resolution. Uh, uh, the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Discussion.
Discussion, I think.
I apologize. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Browning?
Yeah, I, I have a discussion. I have two amendments to offer. They're fairly short, I think.
Okay.
Um, the first amendment would be in section eight, um, on page three, subparagraph one, where um it says Town of Lions businesses are required to, it says number one, follow face covering requirements. I would like to propose an amendment to add to the end of that um phrase, these words, pursuant to State of Colorado and Boulder County orders.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second uh for uh the amendment as stated by uh Mayor Pro Tem Browning.
Mayor, very briefly, the purpose of this is uh we now, unlike when we had our prior emergency proclamation, now the State of Colorado has issued a statewide order on mass face coverings in business establishments and public places too for that matter. Um, as a statutory town, we're bound by state orders like that. Um, and the purpose of this amendment is to make it clear that that's the order we're referring to as opposed to some different um local requirements we might try to come up with. So it's, it's really just a clarification that what we're, what we're referring to there is the state order.
Any further comments? Then I, I assume, counsel, we vote on this amendment?
Mayor Angelo cut out there.
Um, I uh, I assume then, since we have a motion and a second, that at this time we vote on this amendment?
The long, there's no further discussion. I think it's safe to vote on this amendment.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor Angelo?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Browning?
Aye.
Justy Caraviss?
Aye.
Justy Lowell?
Aye.
Justy Miller?
Yay.
Justy Wa?
Aye.
Justy Brogan?
Aye.
The amendment passes unanimously. You had another amendment, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, the, the second amendment, so to speak, um, is to section nine uh of the uh resolution, which deals with the town administrator's uh authority to temporarily suspend enforcement of regulations on licensing and zoning. And the amendment would be to add uh another sentence to the end of that section. And the other sentence would read, "The town administrator shall inform the Board of Trustees of any suspension of enforcement of regulations concerning licensing and zoning." Period.
I'll, I'll second that one too.
We have a motion and a second uh, uh, for the amendment as stated by Mayor Pro Tem uh Browning, uh, any discussion?
Again, this is just to basically make sure the board stays informed of what regulations and things may have been altered.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like, this is trustee, trustee Wa.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, I, I like the spirit of this. I'd like to understand, um, I'd like that notification to be um via email. I don't want to wait for meetings for it. So as soon as any of that enforcement, so I don't know how, if we need to amend that or if um the town administrator could just let us know if, if that occurs from town staff, uh, she could let the uh Board of Trustees know via email uh as soon as it happens. That would be my preference.
Does that take a further uh, uh, revision of the amendment, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, in your opinion?
Um, I don't know. That, that would be fine with me. We could have, you know, as soon as reasonably possible, I guess.
As soon as practical might be.
That'd be fine.
That's fine.
If we could add the words, as soon as practical, and that would be, shall inform the Board of Trustees as soon as practical of any suspension of enforcement and so forth.
Okay. And we have a second onto that uh addition.
I do.
Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Angelo?
That's okay, uh, town clerk. That could, those kind of things can happen.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Browning?
Aye.
Justy Caraviss?
Aye.
Justy Lowell?
Aye.
Justy Miller?
Yay.
Justy Wa?
Aye.
Justy Brogan?
Aye.
The amendment passes unanimously. Are there any further amendments? Seeing none, then we will vote on. Seeing none, then we will vote on.
Trustee Miller has one.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Miller. I didn't, I didn't see it. Go ahead, go ahead.
No problem. I just want to, um, I actually have more of a question, I think. Hang on, let me get to. Uh, in section 10, there, with the gatherings of 10 or more, um, are strongly discouraged. Um, with business meetings, sporting and entertainment events, parties, blah, blah, blah. I just want to make sure that that is not going to impact the wedding, any weddings that might be, um, scheduled, um, with the wedding venues around here. Cause there is the state, um, mandate of, I believe it's 50 right now. So I, I just want to make sure that that's not going to be a problem for the weddings that are scheduled.
Madam Administrator, since you're up to date on those regulations, could you please, um, 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 address that issue?
Um, again, this changes frequently, both at the state level and the county level. Um, so I think maybe what we want to say is, um, again, maybe something similar to what we did with section eight. And say, or, uh, pursuant to the state of Colorado or Boulder County as well. Because it, it will change. Um, right now, I think when this was, this was from the original declaration and things have changed since then. So we could either take it out or just specify a little closer to say, um, that gatherings of unrelated individuals is, is discouraged unless following the state or county regulations, or something to that effect.
Is that acceptable, uh, Trustee Miller?
Um, that's acceptable, but maybe we could put something in there.
So right now, this locally refers to things like in the parks or the playgrounds, those kinds of things. But it, you're correct, where it gives the examples, those now have very specific state guidelines.
So if I may. I have a question concerning that.
Yeah.
Trustee Rogan, let me, let me, uh, uh, recognize you first. You had your hand up first. Grab it.
Thanks. I wonder if, um, we could address that issue by saying public gatherings of more than 10 people? Because a wedding is a private gathering.
Yeah, that could be it. Uh, Attorney Dittman was about ready to say something. Maybe he could.
What, Counselor?
Well, I think it's two points. You know, one, this only says that such events are discouraged and say that they can't happen.
Right.
Consideration. And then two, I think, um, you could alternatively, um, add at the end of that verse to, unless, um, you know, held in accordance with the rules provided they say of Colorado or Boulder, or Boulder County. That may look another way around this.
Okay. Trustee Caravus, you had a comment?
Just a question for, I don't know if it's the attorney or, section six talks about no more than 25 permitted in the parks. It was, it was just said that, uh, you know, public gatherings for 10. Uh, does this conflict with number six? Do we need to change it? Is this part of the old, one of the old ones?
Yeah, we allow, um, up to 25 in our reserved shelters. Um, and that's where that came in. Section 10 was a carryover for sure.
Doesn't 25 with everything's going on seem a little high?
Depends. A lot of peoples consider their families, um, to be extended families that are that big.
Okay.
Where like this weekend, we have a graduation get together that was already reserved.
Okay.
So let's get back to, uh, section 10 and the wording, uh, that would be acceptable to Trustee Miller. Uh, uh, Counselor, uh, do you have recommendation on the language that would satisfy her concern?
Well, if she feels that such change is even necessary, one option would, for her to read, "This resolution shall be effective from the date of passage and shall continue until," oh, sorry, wrong one. There's so many here. Uh, let me start over on section 10. Gatherings of more than 10 people are strongly discouraged and it'll tell us what the events are. I would suggest after that parentheses adding it, adding in, unless held in accordance with the laws of the state of Colorado and Boulder County.
Is that acceptable, Trustee Miller?
Yes, I like that.
Okay.
That's nice and easy.
Any further discussion?
I think we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and then do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the language as stated and agreed to, uh, by Trustee Miller. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Caravus.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Yay.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
And Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
The amendment passes unanimously. Now we will vote on, uh, unless there are any further amendments.
I just have one more, one more, one more thing to say.
Okay.
And it's really, um, to try and, um, protect the, the outdoor music a little bit more. Um, try and put it, an amendment in there somehow. I'm not sure where. I was looking at, reading this earlier, trying to figure out how to go about doing that, where to put it. Um, if anybody has any suggestions, I would appreciate it. But I, I just feel like it needs just a little bit more protection, um, in here. Or a little bit more, hmm, notice, I guess.
Don't feel section nine covers that.
Okay, um, specifically for, for.
Music.
I mean, I just want to make sure that that's, that, that what we've been discussing with, you know, that is gonna make a difference. Because it's, you know, been a, a big deal for a long time. And something needs to be figured out for them. Which is the whole reason why we brought this resol, this resolution up again. Um, and put it on the agenda tonight. So, um, I mean, I guess if you.
We could, we could offer to say something to the effect under section 10, uh, or section nine. Um, if, if the board supports that as a whole, that you could mention, um, hours of operation or, um, noise, noise.
Outdoor music, um.
Outdoor entertainment.
Within, yeah, outdoor entertainment within the hours of, um, you know, within, with, within reasonable hours, um.
I think we, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We just said outdoor entertainment. Uh, it, you'd get the town administrator discretion to determine the rest of those things, like reasonable hours and that kind of stuff.
Okay, if you, if you feel like that's substantial enough, then I, I, I think that that should be an amendment. And I propose that as an amendment.
Okay.
And the, and the language again, Counselor?
Yeah, I was just gonna read that back. So I, I would propose that section nine, which is follows, at least for that first sentence. "So the town administrator may temporarily suspend enforcement of regulations concerning licensing, outdoor entertainment and zoning for the period this resolution is in effect for the purposes of assisting local businesses with the public health and business challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic."
And, and we have a, uh,
Motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, Trustee Miller said she moved that.
And do we have a second? We have a second. We have two seconds. Um, that's all we have left. Um. Okay, any further comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Trustee Wa.
Go ahead.
We stopped audience business and said we were gonna cover this on Monday, specifically the noise ordinance. And, uh, now we're just gonna go ahead and pass it. And allow it to happen. That, I guess that's my question. Um, you know, I think we didn't have full public comment period. We've cut that short. We said we were gonna discuss it on Monday. I don't know why we would then just turn around and, and let it happen.
Well, it was a suggestion by me to put it on the, to put it on the next, uh, agenda. It wasn't, it, there wasn't a lot of, uh, um, feedback from the Board of Trustees. Yes, I did cut the, uh, the, uh, public, uh, input, uh, short. But it had gone over, uh, it's normal, a lot of time substantially. So I felt that to move the meeting along, uh, that that was, uh, um, prudent in this particular situation because, and I don't mean to be rude. Basically, what we were hearing, for all intents and purposes, was the same thing over and over and over again. Not 100%, but in the 80 percentile. So, I mean, we don't, if we pass this, then perhaps we don't need to, uh, address a, uh, complete, uh, sound ordinance, uh, um, code. Um, and we could delay it, uh, for a couple of months, which I think was the purpose of, uh, of this, uh, resolution tonight. But, uh, your point is well taken, Trustee Wa.
Okay, well, before we vote then, I'd like to make a couple of comments, um, uh, about this. Um, first of all, I think that it is a music town and, um, we need to appreciate music and we need to listen to music. Um, I also did not care for the tenor of the public comment with regard to singling out an individual. I think that, um, this, this has happened significantly. I've seen the posts on Facebook where the individual was named and their address was, was sent out. Um, as a citizen, which I don't believe Mr. Yarborough is a citizen of the Town of Lyons. Uh, to single out somebody that lives in the Town of Lyons, um, that way is inappropriate and not in the spirit of the Town of Lyons in general. Um, I'm a big fan of acoustic music and I think that it should be acoustic. And I think it should be acoustic in the same way that other properties on, in town are forced to do acoustic. And that includes no amplification of acoustic music and only, um, some announcements to be made over a microphone. Um, as I said at the last meeting, I could hear the music at my house. I did not call to complain. And I also feel that the argument that, oh, it's always been loud is, is, is a ridiculous argument. I think that both the owners of the property and Mr. Yarborough should have in, known what the noise ordinance is, were in the town. This has been an ongoing issue for over a year. And really that, um, you know, I don't feel like they've, they've been working collaboratively with the neighbors. They've been more picking on one specific neighbor who had a concern. And to that regard, I'd like to read, uh, a letter that was issued by the building owner to the Board of Trustees in June of 2015 with regard to another venue that was playing loud amplified music. And this neighbor, Mr. Pat Thomas, was not thrilled. Um, and he wrote a letter to the board. And I quote this letter that says, "We feel the town needs to create and enforce a more stringent regulations to ensure that Riverbend will operate in harmony with the multitude of residential neighbors surrounding it. One suggestion for the solution of the noise is for the venue to become acoustic only with no loud instruments, no amplification, no drums, no horns, no bagpipes, no piano, et cetera, effective immediately. The nuisance noise level should continue to carefully be monitored and adjusted. Specifically, and I'm gonna cut ahead here, our experience during the past year indicates that the conditions of Riverbend may also host private events with acoustic sound and no loud instruments. And that sufficiently harsh penalties should be established for cases where Riverbend does not abide to these conditions. So I would like to understand from the property owner, who in my opinion, did not do the proper due diligence when he pers, purchased this commercial property. And, and basically is finding himself in a situation where he's rented and made, uh, made commitments to Mr. Yarborough with regard to what can happen in town. I'll tell you, we didn't used to have floodplain regulations enforced in town, but we sure changed that about seven years ago. So the argument that it's always been that way and it's always been loud is moot. And it's, 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 it's a nonsensical argument from my perspective. The other thing that I'll say is that in the Town of Lyons, due to the topography, decibel levels are unusable. We spent hundreds, if not thousands of dollars performing decibel, uh, checks with the Riverbend property. We worked collaboratively with the neighbors, not accusatory, but collaboratively with the neighbors to, and, to ensure that we could come to a solution. And the only thing that we were able to come to was acoustic only music. So we've tried decibel levels. If we lived on the plains, that would be one thing. Because you can, you can hear, you can not hear it at the dairy bar, but you can hear it loud and clear at my house. And that's just a matter of topography and buildings and the way sound travels. So a straight on decibel is not, is not available. So.
Sorry.
I personally think that, um, you know, I don't want to see the Lions Den suffer. I think that they've had a, a special issue because they have to be outside because of some of the restraints from COVID. And I'm willing to, you know, I'm willing to consider that during the COVID period. But as soon as the emergency declarations end and so forth, I think we need to go through the overlay, commercial overlay process. And I know that Mayor Pro Tem says that that actually limits it. It was put in place in 2016. It was edited in 2018 specifically to meet the requirements of the neighbors. I also noticed that many of the people who spoke during public, during audience business, with the exception of a few, I will admit, don't live anywhere near the Lions Den. They live outside of town. They live, they live in Big Elk Meadows. They live in other places. And while they are members of our community, I think that the people who live within a block or two of the Lions Den, um, should also have a little bit of say about the music and how loud it is. So I will support this temporarily during the time of COVID. And then I, I would like to see them go through the actual process to go through a commercial overlay district. And I would like to see it be acoustic only. And I think that in most of the overlay district, it should also be acoustic only. It's a small venue. We don't need a lot of amplification from my perspective. So I will say that, but with that said, I will support if that's what the town decides to do and the town administrator decides to, to alleviate that restriction based on this emergency ordinance. But I find the hypocrisy of Mr. Thomas enraging and, and unexplainable. And I've asked him to reconcile his letter that he sent on June 12, uh, June of 2015 with the letter that he sent earlier this week because they are in direct conflict with each other in terms of how this should be handled.
Thank you, uh, Trustee Rogan.
Thank you. Um, I think we need to keep this discussion focused on the emergency ordinance. And, um, I think that it's, um, not quite fair to, uh, have a discussion about the Lions Den and about the noise ordinance without it having properly noticed so that everybody who wants to hear it can hear it. So, um, with that said, I would support the town administrator making the call on this during COVID. And I would, um, hope to have the noise discussion regarding Lions Den and overlay districts and all of that stuff in the very near future.
And I would as well. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Browning.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it brief. Um, during the term of the last board, Sergeant Crist, requested that the board, uh, take up the noise ordinance and address the issue. He believed the consist, the existing ordinance was, uh, vague and difficult to enforce. I supported that. Uh, the majority of the board did not. Uh, the issue has come up again, predictably this spring. Um, the board has had months to try to take up this issue. We didn't. Um, the root of this problem is the noise ordinance, in my opinion. And if we want to replace that with a overlay district that specifies, um, hours and acoustic only, that's something we could replace the noise ordinance with. We could, we can discuss that at, at a future date. But I don't believe that an emergency proclamation is the proper place to suspend a noise ordinance that's been at issue for an hour and a half, I mean, for a year and a half. I support outdoor music. I was at the Lions Den last Saturday night. I didn't think the music was too loud. But it's, this isn't the proper place to take it up. So I'm reluctant to try to transfer the burden of dealing with a difficult, vague, hard to enforce ordinance to the town administrator. Right now, we've dumped that duty on the sheriff's office. And so I really think we should wait a week and deal with that issue separately and not here, uh, in the midst of an emergency ordinance. As much as I would hate to lose another business and I would hate to lose the Lions Den, I don't think that that rises to the level of a townwide emergency. So I, I, I reluctantly, uh, don't support this amendment.
Any further comment?
Mayor Angelo. Mayor Angelo, can I get a comment just for the record?
You can, sir.
Just so it's clear for the record, that this emergency resolution, if it's amended as proposed, would not modify the town's noise ordinance. It does not grant any special rights to any individual property owner. It simply gives the town administrator to, you know, temporarily suspend any regulations relating to, to outdoor entertainment. It doesn't grant anything further than that. So I just wanted the record to be clear if this comes up in the future, that, that is what we're doing here tonight and nothing more.
Thank you, sir.
That's the whole reason we brought this back to, to put this on the agenda tonight.
Yes. So we have a motion and a second to amend Section 10 as stated. Any further comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of Madam Clerk.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Browning.
No.
Trustee Carabas.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Yay.
Trustee Wa.
I'm muted, Trustee Wa.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? Okay. And Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
The amendment passes five to two. Now we'll vote on a resolution.
I'd like to clarify that. It's five to one with one abstention.
Excuse me. Five to one with one abstention. So now we'll vote on, unless there are any other amendments. Are there any other amendments? Hearing none, we will vote on Resolution 2020-120 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Carabas.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Miller. Trustee Wa.
Aye.
And Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
Resolution 2020-120 passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution 2020-119 into the record?
Yes, Resolution 2020-119, "Resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, consenting to the application enforcement of the Boulder County Fire Ban within the corporate limits of the Town of Lyons."
Staff report.
The Board of Trustees is aware that Boulder County Sheriff Joe Pelley announced a Level 2 fire ban within the county on July 10. When the county makes a proclamation like this, it does not include the municipal, the municipalities within those boundaries of the county. So it is up to each town or city to determine if they want to adopt the same. So this is, we have now gone two more weeks with basically no moisture and large possibilities of afternoon lightning. And so this is just a resolution for the board to consider on whether or not they want to put into place a fire restriction similar to the county's Level 2 fire restriction within the town limits of Lyons. It should be noted that, you know, the difference is within the town limits, we do have fire hydrants. We do have other ways to suppress fires more quickly than in the county. However, it is, like I said, two more weeks with no moisture. So it is considered very high risk of fire danger right now.
Are there any questions for the administrator? Are there?
I do have, I do have one request from the Parks Department. And that is if we put this into place, our, our guests in our camping spots will not be able to use charcoal. And many of them are arriving for their weekends and don't have other arrangements. So they are asking if that could be in place on Monday. The use of charcoals in the town parks.
Starting Monday? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, they're asking for it, at least the charcoal part. And I know that's very specific, so I hate to even ask. But it was a request, since we did have numerous campers show up today and none of them brought their, their little camp stoves.
Can we accomplish that administratively, Counselor? Or do we need to amend the resolution?
Practically, the town could just not enforce that piece of that. It's better practice to have a, you know, an effect date be in the future. But practically, yes, we could just not enforce that piece of that temporarily.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem Browning.
Mayor, with regard to that question, I believe we just, we're going to pass a proclamation that gives the town administrator broad rulemaking authority for the parks. And I think that would take care of charcoal.
And it would just be for the.
Okay. All right.
I do want to clarify that this does mean that there cannot be fires on private or public property unless it is a permanent fixture. Just so everyone understands that, that means your backyard fire pit, if it's, if it's a temporary one, is not allowed.
Okay. Everybody understand? All righty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on, oh, I need a, I'm sorry. Could I have a motion to approve 2020?
So moved.
119 and a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 2020-119. Any further discussion? Trustee Rogan.
I just want to say that considering a squirrel chewing an electric line set the hill behind us on fire a couple of weekends ago, I am really relieved to see this.
Good. Any further comments? Okay, could we please have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Carabas.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Yay.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
And Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
Resolution 2020-119 passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, would you please read Resolution 2020-118 into the record?
Yes, Resolution 2020-118, "Resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, approving the Lyons Integrated Weed Management Plan."
Could we have a background staff?
Dave Costgrove cannot be here tonight, but I think I'll try to give some preliminary background. This was the same plan you saw on Monday night for the Integrated Weed Management Plan. You may remember that we had a discussion concerning that plan. The board did not recommend any changes. However, page four of that document did have what the original language was and suggested compromise language. And so the, the part concerning what the original language was and suggestion have been deleted out and only the compromise language remains. There was some confusion about what exactly the changes were. So I think those have been ironed out at this point. But just to be clear for everyone involved, there have been no changes other than, than those minor editorial changes since the board meeting on Monday. And this is the draft that was approved by the conditioners, the, excuse me, the petitioners and the EAB and PRC Chair. So that is what we are voting on here tonight, just kind of closing, you know, wrapping up this process by finally approving the compromised integrated weed management plan via resolution.
Any further staff information? Trustee Wa, do you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are you under the impression that if we do pass this tonight, that the petition will be withdrawn? Is that your understanding?
Yes, that's what they were, they, they, as long as it was approved with their language, that would be the case.
Thank you very much. Are there any further comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote of Madam Clerk.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion in a second.
That's two times in a row. Could we have a motion for approval of 2020-118?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution 2020-118. Any further comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Carabas.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Yay.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
And Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
Resolution 2020-118 passes unanimously. And I want to thank everybody that was involved in the compromise. And I want to thank my fellow members of the Board of Trustees who had to, let me say, be willing to compromise themselves so that we wouldn't have a divisive election on this issue. Thank you very much. In regard to Resolution 20, excuse me, in regard to the discussion by the Board of Trustees regarding a revocation of a, of a building permit issued to 812 Mountain View Drive, at this time, I will recuse myself from this discussion. And the reason is, there are several reasons, but the most important reason is that in the future, issues that are related to this may come into play in regard to a property that is owned by my family. And so I feel that at this time, it would be proper for me not to be involved in this issue whatsoever. And so I will recuse myself, leave the room, and Mayor Protem Browning will take over the discussion. Thank you.
I'll give Mayor Angelo a couple of moments to do that.
I'll keep an eye on him.
Okay.
See you, sir.
Okay. Okay, we are now in the portion of the meeting that deals with discussion of possible revocation of the building permit at 812 Mountain View Drive. As a preliminary matter, were a revocation of a permit to be done under the Lyons Municipal Code, that requires a minimum seven days' notice, including certified mail notice to the property owner. That's not what we're here for tonight. The actual revocation is not before us. Now, this is something narrower than that. It is a discussion by this board in direction as to whether we go forward with a revocation hearing under the circumstances, including the notice required by the code. So that's the, the scope of what we're talking about, not actual revocation. Secondly, another preliminary matter, I would like to ask if any other trustees wish to discuss either recusal or abstention on this matter before we get started.
Trustee Wa, for the public record, I do own a lot in town. It is adjacent to my current property. It already has a water tap on it. And I, speaking with Attorney Dittman, reviewing the Lyons Code of Ethics and reviewing documents provided by Attorney Dittman, I do not feel that it's necessary for my, for me to recuse myself and will not be doing so.
Okay.
Trustee Wa, for the record, can I ask one question?
Go ahead, Trustee Dittman.
Do you have any direct pecuniary interests in the current matter before the board?
None.
Thank you. And go, one more question. Can you decide the current matter before the board impartially and without bias?
Yes.
Okay, Rule 7 of the Board of Trustees Legislative Policy adopted by the last board and still in place for this board provides, as follow, it basically says, any trustee may recuse themselves. And they may choose to do that or not to do that if the conflict of interest is not personal or financial. It also says in Part B of Rule 7, "Any trustee may request that the board vote on the propriety and necessity of abstention by his or herself or by another trustee." So if any trustee perceives a potential, a conflict of interest that they believe, may warrant recusal by another trustee, that can be brought up and suggested, and the board may vote on it. I would like to bring that up. The underlying code provision and ordinance relating to already annexed, already platted vacant lots affects by, by best count about seven lots in town. One of them was quite apparent when the board discussed that change in the, in the ordinance last year in 2019 because Mayor Angelo, then a private citizen before he even announced his candidacy of mayor, as mayor, made it clear that he owns such a lot. And so, and that the change that would, that was proposed and ultimately adopted would affect his financial interests because it would affect whether he, if he ever wanted to build on that lot, would require him to put up a water share. Under the old rule, as explained to the board, he would not. Under the current rule, he would. I became aware because Trustee Wa told me at a campaign event that he owns a similar lot. He's mentioned that his lot that he owns, which is also already annexed, already planted and vacant, differs in one respect in that he owns a water tap. I've got two months, two comments with respect to the water tap. Number one, the requirement for putting up a water share in the code is fairly clear. It is triggered when either a tap fee is, is paid or a new connection is made. So the fact that there would need to be a new connection to develop that vacant lot triggers the water share requirement should he ever decide to build on it. Secondly, the fact that he has a, an existing tap actually, in my view, makes it a greater conflict than if he did not. Because the 812 Mountain View lot that we're about to discuss in some Dale, in some detail, also has a water tap. So Trustee Wa's vacant lot is actually closer in terms of its facts. In fact, it's practically identical that I can see with the 812 Mountain View lot that we're doing. If he did not have a water tap, it would be a little bit more different. But the fact that he does have a water tap makes it much more similar. So it's my opinion, this is my opinion as one trustee among six remaining in this session, that Trustee Wa should recuse himself or at a minimum abstain from voting. I would not have a problem if he wanted to listen to the discussion because there will probably be, be other hearings general items on this. But pursuant to Rule 7B of the Legislative Policy, I will request that the board vote on the propriety and necessity of abstention by Trustee Wa. And I will, at this point, entertain any discussion from any other board members who wish to comment on that before, before proceeding to a vote. Any further comments? If not, then I would ask the clerk to call the roll regarding whether Trustee Wa should recuse or abstain in this matter.
Mayor Protem Browning, I have a question.
All right.
So, so are we voting on whether Trustee Wa should recuse himself entirely or should abstain from voting?
I guess abstention is the less severe. So I guess, since I'm the one suggesting that we vote on it, I think we should first vote on whether he should abstain or not.
And Trustee Brown, Mayor Protem Browning.
Go ahead, you have a suggestion.
Rule 7B does say that any trustee may request the board vote on the propriety and necessity of abstention by his or. by his or herself or by another trustee. So the vote would only be for abstention, not for recusal.
All right. So to, to clarify that, in case anyone might even hear it, Rule seven B refers only to abstention. So the vote will be on whether trustees should abstain from voting. Um, it would, it will not be a vote on whether he should totally recuse himself or not. And I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
All right. Mayor Angelo has recused himself. Mayor Pro Tem Browning.
Aye, on abstention.
Trustee Caravus.
Aye, on the abstention.
Trustee Lowell.
No, abstention.
Trustee Miller.
Yay.
Trustee. Can Trustee Wa vote? Attorney Ditman.
There's no restriction, so it's up to Trustee Wa whether or not he prefers to vote.
Okay, Trustee Wa.
I'll abstain.
And Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
If that's the case, I'll recuse myself and get back to my vacation. Thank you for the board for, thank you for my fellow trustees for stating their opinions. I appreciate your opinion.
Have fun on your vacation.
Okay, resuming with the discussion on, um, whether to proceed with, uh, the building revocation, the building permit revocation process for eight twelve Mountain View. Um, I would first, uh, call on, uh, Town Attorney Ditman, uh, for any comments he might wish to make with respect to the procedure here. Um, I would state for the record that Trustee Ditman, Attorney Ditman, uh, has provided an extensive legal memo to the Board of Trustees on the factual and legal background of this matter. Uh, that is a matter of attorney-client privilege and it's so labeled. And so it is not in the public record, but I just wish the public to know that that memorandum has been prepared, uh, and made available to the trustees. And for that, I would turn it over to, uh, Trustee, uh, to Attorney Ditman.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Browning. I just want to make one, you know, point before we begin these proceedings is that, one, uh, what we're doing here tonight is only with regards eight twelve Mountain View. It's not, it's no presidential effect towards any other property. Uh, if a similar situation were to occur with that other property, the facts would have to be evaluated on its face with regard to that property. So that's one thing to keep in mind as we go through the discussions. Two, we already touched on this, but this is simply a hearing, uh, not a hearing even, but a, a public meeting on whether or not the board wants to schedule a future item on revocation. Nothing said or done here tonight, um, can be used in that revocation hearing, um, if it were to occur. And so this is simply on whether or not to schedule, um, a revocation here. And that's the sole purpose of tonight's meeting. And so with those two, uh, prefatory statements out of the way, I did want to give a short factual, um, presentation, um, very short, um, to kind of set tee this item up. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'd also like you to keep in mind that the things that are contained within that memo are confidential attorney-client privilege information. The board does have a duty not to disclose confidential information. And so if you feel that the information that you'd like to ask about, which, uh, is, that is in that memo is confidential, uh, please do not, um, please refrain from referencing it during this, this presentation. And so with those, uh, quick things out of the way, I will go through my very short, uh, presentation. I'm going to share my screen here for a second. Haven't used PowerPoint in some time. All right, can everyone see that? Yeah. Um, so I wanted to briefly go over, um, the lines of municipal code and the requirements for water rights dedication. Uh, there are three such requirements in the code. I'm going to kind of go through each one and the applicable exceptions for each code provision. So first is L M C seventeen fourteen ten. Uh, this is the oldest, uh, water rights dedication requirement. The code will discuss them a little bit. And it requires water upon annexation. Um, there are four exceptions to that code provision. One being cash in lieu. If a developer over to pay cash in lieu of that water right, uh, dedication requirement, um, that is one such exception. Um, two is the site is not suitable for development. And the code defines that based on, uh, a slope requirement. Basically, if it's a twenty-five percent grade or higher, um, the, uh, the plat notes can say that such lots are unsuitable for development. The third one is the Board of Trustees may, for good cause shown, increase, uh, reduce or waive the amount of water rights required. And then fourth, um, there can be an agreement to provide water at the time of subdivision. So those are, uh, that's the requirement with a concern to annexation. Um, much later, uh, a requirement was added to the code, uh, requiring water at time of subdivisions or as time of subdivision or P U D, uh, planning a development. This requirement only has two exceptions. Um, one, if it were to conflict with the subdivision agreement, um, or any similar development agreement. And then two, the Board of Trustees may, for good cause shown, um, increase, reduce or waive the amount of water rights required. And then it does contain the provision that where the land was previously annexed, um, then the water share dedication requirement is required before the first building permit for the approved development is pulled. And so that's the subdivision requirements. The third, um, requirement in the code, um, which is most recent and was passed in twenty nineteen, uh, pursuant to ordinance ten fifty-five, requires water at the time of a new water connection or tap, is the, is the language that's in the code. And it contains two exceptions. One conflict, a conflict with an subdivision improvement agreement or other development agreement. Or three, kind of like the other ones, for the Board of Trustees, that sole discretion determines that the connection in question will not negatively impact the town's water supply in such a way as to require the dedication of water rights. Uh, this provision, unlike the one, uh, with concern subdivision and P U Ds, requires that water rights be dedicated, uh, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the approved development, rather than a subdivision as a whole. And so those are the three, uh, different click requirements, um, just to keep in mind during this discussion. I next wanted to basically give a brief, uh, timeline of events with regard to water rights dedication for the Mountain View subdivision and also for eight twelve Mountain View. Um, so beginning at, going back to the founding of the town in eighteen eighty, um, and up to nineteen twenty-nine, which is, uh, the, the, the best old plat we have of the town. Uh, the town plat does show the land underlying Mountain View subdivision was in the town, at least at, uh, nineteen twenty-nine, but perhaps even earlier than that. So it's part of more or less the original, uh, boundaries of the town. Um, in nineteen forty-one, the town did purchase four hundred and fifty C B T shares, uh, presumably to cover, um, those original pieces. Um, there is no policy we have uncovered or any minutes we've uncovered in nineteen forty-one is given that, that, how far back it goes, um, whether explicitly those four hundred and fifty C B T shares, uh, were for these original properties in town. Um, but that is the presumption. Uh, now, what we don't know is whether those four hundred and fifty shares, uh, in any way, uh, uh, plan for any future development, uh, whether those properties would be subdivided at some point in time. We certainly, we just don't know, given how far back it was. Fast forward all the way to nineteen ninety-three, which is, uh, more or less the time the Mountain View subdivision came into play. So in nineteen ninety, in December of nineteen ninety-three, the town did purchase twelve C B T shares. Um, at the end of December of nineteen ninety-three, at least December twentieth, the Mountain View subdivision was approved by the Board of Trustees. Um, it was done by, via motion, interestingly, uh, but there was a P C D resolution that preceded that approval. Um, and there was, uh, a, a motion that was approved by the Board of Trustees to approve the final Mountain View subdivision plat and the corresponding development agreement. Um, interestingly, in both the, the P C D C or was called the Planning Commission at the time, uh, minutes and resolutions, as well as the Board of Trustees doc, documentation, there is no mention of water rights dedication upon subdivision. However, there were shares purchased at approximately the same time, uh, earlier in that month. Uh, and once again, as was practice of, of the town at that, at that time, uh, there was not really much discussion as to why shares are being purchased. And when you look back to the records of the Colorado Big Thompson Project, Northern Colorado, all they show is that the town purchased, uh, so many water shares on X day. It doesn't say why they were purchased. The only exception to that rule is if they were required by, uh, the developer in a subdivision improvement agreement, then especially in the, the later, more current years, it will show that it was purchased by, um, certain developer that dedicated the town. But the ones done in nineteen ninety-three and the ones done in February nineteen ninety-four, uh, both say they are purchased by the town alliance. And the minutes, uh, concerning those purchases, which were included in the, the public documentation, uh, do not give any reasoning as to why that, that water was purchased. In April nineteen ninety-four, the subdivision improvement agreement for the Mountain View subdivision was executed by the parties. Um, and that subdivision improvement agreement, uh, does not contain any reference to water share dedication. It's completely silent on that, on that issue. Fast forward to two thousand and three, uh, Dave Wickham did purchase, uh, eight twelve Mountain View. And in the period between two thousand and three and twenty nineteen, there were various conversations between town staff, officials and agents and Dave Wickham inserting the, the status of water rights eight twelve Mountain View. Uh, the documentation that we've uncovered, um, shows that sometimes these town staff opinions were conflicting, um, concerning whether water rights can be dedicated on eight twelve Mountain View or not. Um, but there were various, uh, conversations, and we can kind of talk about that in detail if you'd like, um, concerning water rights on that property. In March of twenty nineteen, um, after several attempts to pass emergency ordinance which failed, um, ordinance ten fifty-five did pass, requiring water rights dedications for all new water connections and taps. If you look through the minutes for those meetings, um, both through ordinance ten thirty-three, ten, I believe is ten fifty-three, which was the emergency origin ordinance and ordinance ten fifty-five. Um, ostensibly, the reasoning for those ordinances were the town believed it was short on water and it would like uh, annexed, previously annexed and unsubdivided lots to, to dedicate more water, um, upon pulling a tap or a water connection. Um, however, uh, it should be noted, um, that even at that time, I, I think the general advice was we'd have to do a case-by-case analysis as to each property, whether water had actually been dedicated, but the intent was indeed to require on annexed and previously subdivided, uh, properties to dedicate water. On March fifth, twenty twenty, there was a meeting between Dave Wickham, the town administrator and the town clerk, uh, concerning, uh, the development at eight twelve Mountain View. Um, on March tenth, uh, Dave Wickham did apply for a building permit at eight twelve Mountain View. The total cost of the permit, including water, sewer, electric taps with fifty-three, almost fifty-four thousand dollars. I won't say the exact number. On May first, that building permit was approved, uh, for eight twelve Mountain View. On, uh, May, May first, twenty twenty through July fourteenth, twenty twenty, there was various blasting and site preparation work at eight twelve Mountain View that I, I believe you've heard about earlier tonight. And on July fourteenth, this upper order was issued for suspected violations of the lines of municipal code, uh, specifically, uh, the, the provision we've been talking about tonight, that was codified in ordinance ten fifty-five. And so that's the basic timeline of what happened. Of course, there's a lot more detail in each of these items, uh, as discussed in, uh, the confidential legal memo, as well as the public materials that are available on the town agenda. I'm happy to discuss anything in detail. There's, um, as shown by the two hundred and forty-page, uh, agenda we had tonight. Uh, there's a lot of information here, uh, very long history, uh, of water rights dedications of the town and different policies over time. Um, one thing I, I do want to point out that I don't know if I covered or not, is that, uh, when the subdivision was approved in nineteen ninety-four, there was no requirement that water be provided upon subdivision or upon pulling a tap and, uh, or connection of water. Uh, the only requirement that existed at that time was, uh, water be, uh, dedicated upon annexation, along with those exceptions we talked about on the previous slide. Uh, we know this because, uh, as shown and, uh, shown in the public record here tonight, uh, we pulled nineteen ninety-four code, and that nineteen ninety-four code only has the requirement for water being dedicated upon annexation. And so that is one important piece of, uh, information to remember as we discuss these, these items, um, that, you know, at the time, there was no requirement for subdivision. So really, that discussion concerning, uh, water requirements upon subdivision is really applicable here. It's only, uh, the annexation one, and then, of course, the newer requirement, uh, done by ordinance ten fifty-five. And so that's, that's my presentation, more or less, just to kind of set the field for this discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Hey, does, do any trustees have questions for the town attorney?
I do.
Trustee Lowell.
Yeah, Attorney Ditman, um, my, my first question, I guess, and maybe it's not appropriate to ask you this, but why is this being brought up now? What was the impetus for this discussion?
I think the impetus for this discussion was that it was discovered, um, by a trustee that work was being, uh, conducted on this property. And, um, there was a question as to, uh, how that building permit was acquired and whether water share was dedicated. And so upon investigation, it determined the water share was not dedicated. And the question, uh, was brought before the board at, uh, at the mayor, the mayor pro tem's recommendation for the board to consider whether or not that permit was issued properly or not.
That's fair. Follow-ups. Um, I have some observations here. This whole thing reads, it's, it's very confusing, and I can see where the, the town appears at first glance to not have a leg to stand on if this ever goes to legal, if the building permit were revoked at a hearing. And then if we were, um, if there were legal proceedings against the town, I don't see how the town could possibly win. Um, I'm looking at Attorney Zuckerman's letter and summation of the events. I'm looking at yours as well, counsel. Uh, Attorney Zuckerman indicates that, um, there are no other individual lot owners within this so-called Kelling Minor Subdivision Plat Amendment that have dedicated C B T water shares to the town. Do you concur with that?
Well, I, I think there, the Kelling subdivision is different from the Mountain View subdivision, but in both cases, um, this would be the first for such property to require water, because there's been no application for a building permit in either subdivision, uh, since ordinance ten fifty-five was passed. But yes, it is accurate.
Um, there's an indication here that in two thousand and three, the town building department told Mr. Wickham that the water dedication had been satisfied, and then in point of fact, the, the developer George Chandler had said that he had dedicated the water rights with requirement for this subdivision approval. Do you agree with that point?
Um, as to the first statement, there's been numerous statements, um, made to Mr. Wickham over time, it appears, based on the record, and some of those materials are referenced in the confidential legal memorandum, um, that he either did or did not have water rights, um, at this property. Um, so yes, uh, the building, I think it's fair to say, based on impression we've gathered, that various times people have told Mr. Wickham that he did have water rights on this property. However, as to the second, uh, point concerning George Chandler, there is no evidence that George Chandler ever dedicated water. Now, ha, ha, was he in compliance with the code at the time? That seems likely, given that, um, you know, we looked at the P C D C minutes in the Board of Trustees minutes. Um, there was no talk of water, and in fact, there was no requirement in the code at the time to dedicate water upon subdivision. It was only upon annexation. And from what we can tell, um, if you look at the maps, this property has been in the town since essentially the founding. And so it was never annexed either. Um, and so because there was never annexation, and there was no requirement for subdivision at the time, there was no requirement for water to ever be dedicated.
Okay, were there, um, was there ever any, for lack of a better term, financial forensics done during this in, investigation, uh, to see whether, uh, Mr. Chandler or whatever his LLC was at the time, had paid the town any money in lieu of C B T shares? I, 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 I look back to the, your point that in December of nineteen ninety-three, about a year after, um, uh, the Mountain View subdivision was approved, that the town purchased twelve C B T shares. And I'm just wondering whether he had given money in lieu of shares and those twelve C B T shares might be the end result of that, uh, money being given to the town.
So the Mountain View subdivision was actually approved in December of nineteen ninety-three. The, the, that they were the, the first meeting of December is when the board bought the twelve shares. And the second meeting in December is when the Mountain View subdivision was approved. It was actually the same month. Um, and then later in February, they bought eighty more shares. But if you look at the minutes of both of those meetings, which are in the public packet, um, there is no evidence as to why those shares. there is no evidence as to why those shares were bought, only that the town bought them. Presumably because the price was good. That was one thing that was mentioned, I believe, in the February minutes. But there was no comment beyond that. And so I've asked for all records concerning water rights dedications and money paid in lieu. There is, for far as we can tell, there is no records the town possesses concerning that, or at least I haven't been able to obtain, except that there is these two coincidental purchases that are roughly the same time. But there would have been no requirement at the time to pay money in lieu, because it was already, it had never been annexed. And so that's the one countervailing fact. But we just can't know, based on the town's, the records, at least what I've seen, as to what exact, whether money was paid in lieu at that time.
You know, I have no doubt that there was considerable shoddy record-keeping done at the time. So here's my observation, no more questions for you, counsel, but I look at this and I see the possibility that with all the evidence that's piling up here and with the, with the ambiguities that have been presented by town council and Attorney Zuckerman, that I don't think we're going to be able to defend this in a court.
Trustee Lowell, if I may, the normal procedure is to give the full board the opportunity to ask questions of the attorney and then comments after we get questions answered from him or other staff members.
All right, I'll yield, I'll talk, I'll talk later, thanks.
Let me ask if any of the other trustees have questions of Attorney Ditman? If there are none, is there any further staff presentation other than from Attorney Ditman?
Trustee Rogan had her hand raised.
Oh, yeah. Attorney Ditman, if you could return the full screen, because I can't see all the other trustees, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, Trustee Rogan.
Thank you. I know it's hard with a little strip of people. I appreciate Trustee Lowell's questions, thank you. I'm not sure if this question is for Attorney Ditman or for Administrator Simonsen, but as somebody who has thankfully never had to pull a building permit to build a house, I'm curious about what that process is, or if it was any different when 12 pulled theirs, what it was then. You know, who does the submission go to? Who looks at it? Who approves it? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not the one who processes the permits, so I don't think I can have any personal knowledge as to how that occurs.
Actually, I don't process permits either, but Town Clerk Vasquez has. Dolores, are you willing to walk us through the permit process?
No, the permit process is very straightforward. There's a packet that they need to submit. It's got to have site plans, drawings, several different things, who the contractor is, all of those different things. That gets submitted into the building department, then planning will review it, and the building inspectors will review it. It will go through all of that. And in Attorney Ditman's timeline, when we've met with Mr. Wickham in March, like March 10th, before everything shut down, he'd come in to discuss pulling that permit, and that was the discussion of the water share at that point. Because he says, you know, I've already been told I didn't have to, now they're saying I have to, and then everything just shut down. But that's just, it's a process. There's several people that, you know, have their thumb on it when it comes through the process. Like I say, building inspectors, planning to make sure setbacks are correct. But, and then once it's got everybody sign up on it, fire, fire will review it, and then it can go through.
Thank you very much.
Further questions from any other trustee care of us?
Attorney Ditman, based on all your research on this, was ordinance 1055 the way it was intended by the previous boards to pass and solve our water problem adhered to by town staff in issuing this permit? Or should they have not issued it or referred to the board?
From what I can tell, it should have been referred to the board for determination as to whether the permit should be waived or not. I believe that's the correct understanding of the ordinance.
So to reiterate, to make sure I understand that, this permit should not have been issued, should have been denied based on 1055, the way it was designed, but an error was made, and here we are. So with everything that's going on, is this, is 1055 still enforceable in the future because of this?
So one clarification, I don't think that the permit should have been denied, it should have been referred to the board trustees for a termination. I think if we were to go back in time and look at this, and, you know, there may be changes to 1055 to make it better, but that's, if you look at a strict reading of the ordinance, it's probably what should have been done, given that there was no subdivision or development agreement that explicitly waived the requirement for a water share.
So still, is this ordinance still valid?
So the ordinance, sorry, do you have anything further?
No, I'd say moving forward is what I meant.
Of course, it's still valid moving forward. As I've discussed both here tonight and previously, its application has to be reviewed with each individual property to make sure that the town is not requiring water twice, to make sure that it's completely previously done agreements. It's still a valid ordinance, but we need to be careful about how it's applied. And there might be, there might be changes that make it better. I mean, that's up to the board to decide.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of either town attorney or other staff members? I have a couple of questions. One to Attorney Ditman is whether you were ever asked to do an analysis of, as you said, a site-by-site analysis is appropriate for these properties. Were you ever asked to do an analysis of 12 Mountain View after ordinance 1055 went into effect as to whether a water share should be required or not?
I, as I've relayed before, I did have a conversation with former clerk Debbie Anthony at some length when I first became town attorney concerning all similarly situated properties. And at that time, ordinance 1055 was not in effect, so it was not applicable in this situation. I do not recall having an extensive conversation concerning this property. It may have come up at one point in time. I know town administrator Simonsen remembers talking to me about this property at one point in time, but I cannot recall the details of that conversation, nor do I have a billing record that corresponds to that conversation. So if such a discussion was had, it was probably not extensive. But I've never rendered a legal opinion concerning this property, only maybe that conversation if it indeed occurred. And I don't have any reason to believe it didn't, but I just don't have any right of election concerning it.
Next question is, you've gone through the statutes. Other than the possible exception of something being expressly provided for in a subdivision improvement agreement or other subdivision agreement, are you aware of any other provision of the code that gives the staff the authority to decide whether a water share should be required or not?
There's no provision in the code that gives the staff that determination. There may be reasons why that ordinance 1055 may be unenforceable in a certain situation, but that's not really at play here in regard to your question.
And that's because the subdivision improvement agreement says nothing about water share dedications?
Correct. I mean, beyond the subdivision improvement agreement, there may be reasons why a particular property is unenforceable, but as the code provides, there's only two exceptions, and which is, one, the development agreement saying expressly that it's not required, and then, or two, if we kick the board for the board to decide. And in this case, the first option was not applicable.
Okay, thank you. Now we will turn to any trustee comments they wish to make before we basically take a voting position on this. And Trustee Lowell, since I somewhat cut you off before, I would, if you still would like to go forward, I would give you the first opportunity at that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Browning. I'll just keep it short. I've weighed all the, I've weighed all the facts here. I don't think, I don't think the town, as I said before, has a leg to stand on on this one, given the history of what has been told to Mr. Wickham, the evidence, not evidence, the history that's been dug up by Attorney Zuckerman and town council. I could see this being revoked. I could see us going to court, paying legal fees, perhaps paying a settlement to Mr. Wickham, certainly his lawyer fees, because I think we'd lose. I'm going to, I'm going to vote not to go forward with this revocation hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any other trustees wish to offer comments? If there are none from the other trustees, then I have a few comments. Oh, Trustee Miller, please go first.
Um, I'm just, I'm having a hard time digesting all this information, mainly because I was out of town when you guys were supposed to have this meeting last week. But I'm really confused as to why the building permit got issued in the first place without the proper procedure being put in place with coming to the board. I'm also, in reading some of these documents, it's, you know, clear as mud with the CBT shares, and has been such in the past with other issues in this town with infrastructure and such. You know, the code that we put in place is now the code. And one of those things where it specifically states that it has to be connected or, or the connection is the main thing to me. If there was a connection that had already been made, then I feel like that could have been one thing. But it's just really difficult to, to, I mean, the water shares are really a tricky thing, because we need the water. We have very few places left to build out. Yes, the property was platted a long time ago, it was bought a long time ago. Perhaps the CBT water shares were bought for that particular subdivision a long time ago, but that documentation doesn't exist. And the way that that has been dealt with in the past has been only moving forward, right? It's been moving forward from the point of the date of the ordinance of now, not trying to dig back through all the broken records that we have in storage. We really, it's unfortunate that the record-keeping was so poor for a lot of the time, but the situations that we've had in the past have all been kind of, you know, put on the homeowners, unfortunately, and had to move forward with the infrastructure stuff. So that's kind of where I stand right now. I mean, there's a lot more, I think there's a lot more documentation, I mean, there's a lot more research, I think, that could possibly be done, but I don't feel, I don't think that we can just let this go personally. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Trustee Miller. Are there further comments from the other trustees? Trustee Caravas?
Like Trustee Miller, disappointed that all the work that went into the ordinance to seal up or hopefully solidify some of our loss of water as developments came in and permits were pulled. We worked, gosh, a good two years on this. Staff was fully involved, knew, completely knew the intent, and it was just disappointing that this happened and it slipped through, putting us in this situation. That said, also, I guess, I agree with Greg, I'm not going to vote to go to revocation at this point. It was, it's been done, permit was issued, shouldn't have been, sure came to the board as we intended. You know, puts the town in a sticky situation. It's sitting on a property since 2003, the owner is open to any and all code changes that occur between that point in time he decides to pull a permit and build. It's like buying a car that's geared to get great gas mileage of 75 miles an hour, but soon as the law changes to 55 and it doesn't, well, it doesn't mean you get to go 75 still and get that great gas mileage, you'll get a ticket eventually. Laws change, we all buy it by them. And that was the intent of this ordinance that we worked on, the staff worked on. I hope, Brandon, you're correct in that this ordinance hasn't been gutted by this situation. It doesn't cause us greater legal strife when other people that own lots in town go to build and will use this or attempt to use this to their advantage. So it's disappointing that we're here at this, but I'm going to have to say, would you have to let the owner continue on at this point due to the legal ramifications that we would face? Thank you.
Trustee Rogan?
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's comments, and I would not vote to move forward with a hearing as well. I think it's unfair to penalize the Wickhams, who I believe have acted in good faith this entire time, especially considering that they were told that they didn't have to dedicate a water share. I would like to, having not been involved in the creation of this ordinance and knowing that trustee Carabas, trustee Miller and Mayor Pro Tem Browning were, I'm curious about what the trigger is to inform the board. If the building permit process doesn't have a step that looks at whether a CBT water share should be required, then is it that every building permit should come before the board? It seems to me like this slipped through the cracks, perhaps at a time when things were very chaotic. So I think we need to look at tightening up the process and the procedure, but I also would not want to move forward with a revocation hearing.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Rogan. I'll now offer my comments, and I'm going to divide my comments into two parts. And one of them is going to be as brief as I can make it, for a process that involved a workshop and then three different extended Board of Trustees hearings about an ordinance. I'd like to review some of the pertinent points of how ordinance 1055 came to pass. And the reason I do that is because when we're sworn in as trustees, we all take oaths to uphold state law and the Lions Municipal Code as local law. And what we're looking at doing tonight potentially is agreeing not to enforce and to apply a local ordinance, the Lions Municipal Code, that at least three of us voted for. And it's, that's a serious matter for me to take that step. And so I think it is appropriate for me to review, particularly for the trustees who were not, the new trustees who were not present for those last, that last board process, and more importantly, for members of the public, to kind of review as briefly as I can how that came to pass. The process began on January 7th, 2019, when a workshop session was held of the board. What was presented at that workshop was a recommendation from the Utilities Engineering Board, which had reviewed the letter received in the fall of 2018 from Longmont about the IGA, the Intergovernmental Agreement between City of Longmont and the Town of Lyons. One of the things in that letter stated that there was only, there was an overage of only 2.2 water shares. that there was only, there was an overage of only 2.2 water shares, uh, in the town's inventory with Longmont. That to the, as soon as a third, um, new connection was made, the town would be short of water shares. Water shares at that time were selling them for about $60,000 a share. So the, you, the Utilities Engineering Board got concerned, uh, that if more than two, uh, vacant lots came in and requested building permits, there'd be a shortage that it's easy to say the town, um, uh, has to, would have to go buy more shares. It's really the rate payers. The, the shares would have to be bought from the water fund and that every, all the money in the water fund comes from rate payers. So it was really the rate payers that were at risk. So on January 7th, 2019, we had a workshop. The cover memo was from the then-town engineer Joe Cabala. Part five of that, uh, cover memo says, "Legal issues." This requires the shares prior to building permit issue. It also said the UEB had recommended that change. The first of the three hearings that was held was on January 22nd, 2019. And in fact, the town board, at the recommendation of the town staff, proceeded on an emergency basis. Emergency being that if three new building permit applications came in in short order, the town would find itself short of water share. So, and there was some discussion and controversy about whether this was true in emergency or not. Reading excerpts from the minutes of that first meeting, one of them says, "Attorney Dittman stated that if a property is developed, it would be required to dedicate a CBT share of water. Now everyone has to dedicate a CBT share." The word was everyone. Town administrator Simonsen stated that there are two lots in town that feel that they are, were assigned a water share years ago. There could be more to come. There could be more to come in to say they are owed a share and we don't have, we don't have any to give. Later on in that meeting, Mayor Protem Drystat stated, "Without this ordinance, the town would be put in the position of purchasing the water shares. So in fact, everyone would be paying for the shares." Town administrator Simonsen stated, "This is, this is one of the concerns." We didn't have enough, an emergency ordinance has to be passed with six votes, not just five, and we didn't have six votes that night. Only five voted in favor of it. So it got reset uh, as, for another hearing as a basically a regular ordinance. That was on February 4th, 2019. Reading from the amendments at that meeting, they say, "Attorney Dittman stated that the town is down to two water shares and those may be going away." Future development of the town is limited by the fact that you don't have this ordinance in place. Town administrator Simonsen stated that we have plenty of capacity and quantity for our community. What our agreement with Longmont states though is that, um, every parcel you develop must have an additional share. The emergency is if anyone with a current planted lot wishes to develop, they could argue they don't need to go to the share. Later on in the same meeting, February, attorney Dittman said, "We now know there is a problem in facing the fact that if one more comes forward, the town then needs to pay for a share for a private person." Town administrator Simonsen stated that at that time in the 1960s and 70s, shares were $250 and it was not a priority then. We need to clean up the ordinance. Mayor Sullivan, if someone had evidence that they had previously purchased a share or given cash in lieu, then this wouldn't apply. At the third and final meeting on March 18th, 2019, at which ordinance 1055 is passed, trustee, trustee Drystat stated, "I thought there were two reasons. Two or less water shares raised the point. It may be possible to project from that happening as a result of platted properties claiming they had a water share when no documentation of such exists. We don't have an exact count. Nonetheless, it appears that it is a risk. The risk exists. This ordinance is appropriate." Trustee Browning stated, "It is not just a risk of someone claiming a water share and can't prove it. They don't have to put one up, uh, if, if they are subdiv- subdivided and platted. We can't require a share. So it's also how many water shares and vacant lots are left." Reading through, back through those minutes and having gone through those hearings, it was absolutely clear that the Board of Trustees intended to change the rules. The 2017 legal opinion about Kelling Drive was exactly right when it was, when it was issued. At that time, there was nothing in the code that allowed the town to require someone to put up a water share uh, for, to get a building permit if they were already platted and they were already annexed. Just didn't, we didn't have that authority. When attorney, and that was by the prior town's legal counsel, when attorney Dittman came on, his, his firm came on and advised us during the process for ordinance 1055, he agreed with the prior law firm and said, "You don't have the authority in the code to require a water share to be put up for a vacant platted annexed lot." That is exactly the reason we made the change. We changed the law, which a town, which any legislature can do. We changed the law despite property owner Nick Angelo coming and saying, "This isn't fair." When I bought my lot years ago, it was, I, I could have gotten a, a building permit and could have any time since without putting up a water share because those were the rules. That's the policy that town boards for many years have implemented. And now you're going to change the policy and it's not fair to me and the other lot owners who are in my situation. He made that argument three different times before, before the board, again, before he was mayor. The board essentially rejected that argument and decided that given the emergency that the town attorney, the town administrator, the town engineer, the utility engineering, engineering board, and also the town finance director had told us existed, we went ahead and voted ultimately five to one to pass ordinance 1055. It changed the rules. So whatever the complexities were before 2000, March of 2019, however, correct the opinion was in 2017 that the property on Kelling Drive did not have to put up a water share, whatever Mr. Wickham or any other property owner in his situation was told prior to 2019, the rules changed. Uh, we're now operating under a new code provision. Um, so that however, uh, begs the question of what do we do now? Despite the clear provisions in the code, that only the Board of Trustees, words of the code are in its sole discretion, can waive, uh, the water share requirement. It got waived. Um, as, as a, a sitting trustee, I am most upset that this board has been put between a rock and a hard place. If you're a fan of Greek mythology, you go to the myth of Silla and Choribdis, the two dangerous monsters. We have a binary choice that we've been put to in this situation. On the one hand, we can walk away from what, from the very clear ordinance that the, that the prior board passed little more than a year ago and let somebody develop, um, a property in town without, without putting up a water share, one of these remaining vacant lots. Where you're basically would be deciding not to fully enforce our prior ordinance. On the other hand, our choice is to face a lawsuit. Oh, and I should say, the, we, we know pretty much what the cost of, um, of requiring, what, what the, what the cost of a water share is. So if we make somebody put up a water share, we stand to gain $70,000. That's roughly the current market value. If we excuse someone from putting up a water share, we're basically walking away from $70,000. What's the equation on the other side? We've heard that there's something like $50,000 of potential damages out there. We, the town, face the possibility of paying significant legal fees for defending a potential court action that uh, I agree with trustee Lowell completely. Uh, our defenses do not look good. And there's always the possibility that we could be assessed for the other party's legal fees. We're trustees, we're fiduciaries, we owe an obligation to the rate payers and the taxpayers of Lyons. And I agree with trustee Lowell, trustee Caravas and the others who have spoken, uh, that the risk to the town's rate payers and the risk to the town's taxpayers is, um, greater, uh, from proceeding to consider revocation of this permit than it is, uh, allowing the construction to go forward. Sorry, we all got put in this position. It was not this board's fault. It was not the prior board's fault. Um, at a later time, we can discuss fault, but tonight the limited question is, should we go forward, uh, with a revocation hearing? And, uh, my vote on that is also no. Any further comments from town staff or other trustees? If not, uh, unless the town attorney thinks we should proceed in another manner, I believe that the direction from the board is clear, uh, that we will not proceed to revoke, permit revocation hearing. And attorney Dittman, I think that would also necessarily mean that the stop work, uh, order should be rescinded. Is that correct?
That's correct. The stop work order should be rescinded immediately. If that's the board's direction.
Yeah. Is, is the rest of the board okay with that direction to rescind the stop work order? See, nods and thumbs up. So I think the town staff is so directed. Uh, any further comments, uh, by any board member, uh, before, uh, we would entertain a motion to adjourn trustee Caravas?
We just, just Monday night, we had a, another uh, property come up before us in the consent agenda uh, concerning a plot, a plot of land that was subdivided, previous board approved it. Brandon, are we in another situation with the, uh, Red Lion property, similar to this?
That question was specifically asked during that, uh, discussion and they have already dedicated a CBT share.
So we have it on record. So if I walk into town hall tomorrow, Doris can stick it in my face and say, "Shut up, leave us alone. I got it right here." Right? So that's, that's all. We're all good there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Trustee Caravas, in light of that question, for the record, let me inform the board that on the morning after, I guess that was Tuesday, after our late night Monday meeting, I specifically emailed, um, Community Development Director, um, Glasgow and, uh, town administrator Simonsen and asked for details with respect to the dedication of a water share. Um, town staff is very busy, haven't received a response to that, but I asked that very question of how is a water, water share dedicated for that subdivided property? And that's something I think that we will get an answer on and whatever we receive back. I'll, I'll share it with the full board. Um, is there?
I can send that to you, sir. I will do that tomorrow.
Yeah, and I would request that it go to the full board so everybody has the same information.
For Red Lion? Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Um, at this time, having completed the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in my favor, please say aye or indicate aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Get well, Holly.
Thank you, Tryon.